Order the park board meeting, Brainerd, Minnesota, City Hall Council Chambers, March 16th, 2021 at 4:00 PM. Can we get a roll call, please?
Tim Boder? Dale Parks?
Yes.
Troy Rushmeyer?
Yes.
Kara Schaefer?
Yes.
Kevin Jaeger.
Yes. Well, everyone join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm looking for any additions or modifications to the agenda. If anyone has anything? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Parks and a second by Kara. No discussion, any discussion, hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
I was still calling his name if he's left here.
I think that's the point of the roll call, so we know that he is missing, so.
Tim Boder? Dale Parks?
Yes.
Troy Rushmeyer?
Yes.
Kara Schaefer?
Yes.
Kevin Jaeger.
Yes. All right, item number five, the consent calendar. Notice the public, all matters listed are considered routine by the board and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time of the board votes on the motion. Number six, approval of minutes. Anyone look those over and care to make a, make a motion on that?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Parks.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Rushmeyer. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Tim Boder? Dale Parks?
Yes.
Troy Rushmeyer?
Yes.
Kara Schaefer?
Yes.
Kevin Jaeger.
Yes. All right, on to number seven A, this is unfinished business, is the request to review and award the Memorial Park redevelopment project. Mr. Sandy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, we opened bids for Memorial Park on March 1st. We got three bids in total, one from a local company, Anderson Brothers Construction, Odessa Two, and Landwehr Construction. The bids are laid out in your packet. Basically, is what we're looking at is the total low bid from Anderson Brothers, which includes the base bid, alternate one, and the Sourcewell items would equate to $1,243,356. Me and Chris ran some budgetary numbers based on the bond proceeds that the city issued for the project, the parking lot purchase from the Brainerd Industrial Center, WSB's fees, and the 2021 park budget additional allocation of $260,000. The number that we're currently working with as a budget number is $1,164,810. So as you can see, the base bid plus alternate one plus the Sourcewell items are over the amount that we have available. So, me and Chris looked at a couple other options. We actually had a sit-down meeting with Anderson Brothers, who was the apparent low bidder, to look at any type of value engineering items that we could do to try to reduce that cost. Basically, we came to the point that we could nickel and dime this thing until the end, and we wouldn't get anywhere. So, at this point, is what we're recommending, is if we were to award the base bid plus the Sourcewell items related to the base bid, which includes the dasherboards, the lights, and I think there was some rubber tiles for the players' benches, that would equate to a total cost of $1,072,648. We would then look at some other value engineering items that we would maybe have the park board consider. This would include possibly constructing alternate one per the plan and not buying the boards and the lights this year, which would keep us under budget. It wouldn't leave us much for contingency at the end of the day, but it would at least get the, the small rink built and ready, we would have everything plumbed in, like the lights and the boards and everything would be ready to be installed as soon as we pulled the trigger on that. The other option is, is to construct alternate one and put up temporary wood boards for maybe next winter until we can afford to put up the dasherboards and the lights. Would be more of a daytime rink. Some of the other options that we looked at were changing the building from a stick-built construction to a CMU block. Last conversation that I think Chris and I had was that it would probably wouldn't save any money, but that's also something we could look at to see what that cost differential is at this time. So basically, is what we're recommending is that we award, at a minimum, the base bid of $918,329 and authorize staff to purchase the dasherboards, the lighting, and the rubber tires, rubber tiles in the total amount of $154,319. That gets the total base bid package constructed. If we come back in a week at the next park board meeting and we find that alternate one becomes feasible, that we would change order, alternate one into the contract, and do what the park board wants. We could either just construct alternate one with no boards and no lights and get it ready for a future year, or we can not construct it at all and just pull that alternate out and construct it at a different time. So really, the, the options are kind of endless there from what you guys want to do, but I think at a minimum, we would like to award the base bid at this time, and then at a future meeting, we can have some discussion here today and, and figure out what we want to do with alternate one to get that constructed. So, that's really the, the long and short of it. Chris, I know you're on the line, if you have anything additional you wanted to say.
Chris, do we have you?
Yeah, I guess.
Okay.
Only thing I add is I did, I do have talked to the architect and I have talked to Darryl, he spoke with, with Norrison, and you know, there could be a little bit of cost savings with CMUs, but it's not going to amount to a lot. So, I, I don't know that we're gonna probably gain enough to be able to cover all those alternates and the additional Sourcewell packages at this point. We can continue to look at that, but I'm just not optimistic about it.
Anyone else at this point? I guess we'll open it up to any conversation. Rushmeyer, please.
I have a comment about changing the building, and that would, it would look different than, than the building we have at Gregory Park, correct?
If I may, Mr. Chair, it would look different than the one at Gregory, but it would look the same as the ones at Memorial. The Memorial ones are a CMU block, so it would look similar to the buildings at Memorial Park currently.
Okay, but it sounds like the savings is probably not.
The savings isn't there, but I would say from a maintenance perspective, the CMU is preferred over a stick-built. The only reason we were going with a stick-built was because we intended it to be cheaper, but with building prices the way they are right now, it looks like that it's not the case. And I think the architect could speak to that, but it just looks like the CMU and stick-built are probably gonna equate to about, or a little bit less, the CMU would equate to a little bit less, and it's actually more maintenance-friendly than a stick-built would be. So, there is that option that we could do a change order and, and have Norrison come up with a CMU design instead of a stick-built to make it look similar to the other buildings.
This very well may be a conversation that will lead into our design standard, which is right, we're, we're right on the, you know, right on the horizon there. Just real quickly, a point of clarification for me was the, when we're talking about the CMU number, are we talking about the standard CMUs? Are we talking about the textured CMUs that are currently on the other two buildings there? Because there, there should be a cost difference between those two. Chris, do you, do you know?
Yeah, what I heard from Darryl is they were looking at the rock face.
Okay, perfect. Okay, that's all, that was my only question. Anybody else?
I just want to clarify, I apologize, I didn't have a chance to look at this much. The, the bid, what, what all are we including? Is this including the? Branch not working very well. The splash pad? No.
Nope, so the splash pad was kept as a completely separate project as part of this. We laid out the area that they can construct in, and the splash pad and their money, along with what the city set aside for them, is completely separate of this. We're working together, but separate, so it is a completely separate project.
I believe some of the underground is in phase one, though.
Yeah, that's correct.
So, we're looking at not having enough funds to complete the rinks this year? Is that?
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chair, yep.
Yes, please, Mr. Sandy.
Yep, the, the rink, the small rink, we could construct it, but we wouldn't be able to put the boards or the lights up and stay under our budget. We could construct the concrete, put up the basketball hoops, do that, but other, anything else, the Sourcewell packages would put us over that amount. We were looking for areas where we could save some money to try to get us under the budget and still have a little bit for contingency. We don't think it's there, and so, really, there's some options, you know, we could still construct the alternate, get it ready to go, and then put the boards up next year, or we could just wait. Obviously, prices are only probably gonna go up, and so I would, you know, recommend trying to construct as much as we can. And then, you know, if we have to put up wood boards, if we absolutely want to use it right now, we could do something like we did over at, you know, Mill Park with the wood boards, or something like that for the time being, or we could just leave it open and not have a rink there this year, but with the intentions of buying the boards and lights next year or the year after.
So that's just the small rink?
Yep.
The large rink would be completed?
Correct.
With the pickleball courts and the whole?
Correct.
Yes, please, Ms. Schaefer.
So how will that work then? Maybe a question for you, Katie, as, as far as looking ahead for kiddos to, or people to use those? We don't have that little court or the little rink. I know we can't go off of this year, obviously, but in past years? How will that look for kids to play, since we're hopefully gonna have everyone wanting to play every sport and do every activity in the park once they can? No? We'll just?
We do have, we have Bane as well, though we could maybe schedule practices or games at Bane Park, so we do have access to that pond hockey rink, so we can be creative, I think.
Okay.
Anybody else? Yes, please, Mr. Parks.
Remind me again what's in the alternative bid?
Yes, I can, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, please.
So, the alternate bid had the small rink, the construction, basically the concrete and everything, the, it was the lighting and the dasherboard system, and I think that was it, Chris, am I correct in saying that?
Uh, yes, that should be everything, there might, the, the basketball standards might have been in there too.
What was that? Could you please repeat?
The basketball. The, the basketball hoop.
Oh, yeah.
That's the only thing.
Yep, yep. So basically, if we were to construct alternate one, we would just have the, the slab and the hoops, and then the boards and the lights could come later.
Understood. Please, Mr. Rushmeyer.
So, with that being said, is that, would there be, with that concrete pad there without the boards, is there, and people playing basketball, is that gonna be level with the ground, or is there gonna be like a ledge there? I'm just thinking about safety purposes of people playing basketball on that slab and then twisting ankles and/or such type injuries, or do you think it would be more level with the surrounding ground? One, and then two, I've seen there was something about benches for the players. I thought we had opted to not do the benches on that large rink.
Okay, so to answer the first question, I think that's a constructibility thing. If there is a ledge, we would, you know, bring in some topsoil and make sure it was up to grade for the time being.
Sure.
Even if there was proposed to be a drop-off there, so that's not an issue, I don't think. Chris, could you speak to the second question? I'm not exactly sure what the conversations were prior to, about the benches.
Um, yeah, I'm trying to remember too, was the, was the conversation to, to just exclude them altogether, or was that something that the city was gonna provide them? I don't, I don't remember exactly what the conversation was.
Go ahead.
I believe our, what we voted was to remove the benches altogether, to not, to not have the benches. I mean, granted, we would love to, but I, I thought as far as cost savings purposes, we decided to remove the benches altogether, so that should, if I remember right, that should not be part of the construction whatsoever. I think it was felt that those are things that we could add later if we wanted without being, you know, not costing a whole lot extra by adding it versus just getting it in there right away, but, so, I don't know what the cost was, but I remember it was somewhat significant because we decided to remove that from, from the construction design.
I, I think I remember that too. I think it was gonna be something that was added, like with that path, or, because I, I don't know, I feel like I remember you saying, Chris, that we could add it easily later. Are we, are we all remembering wrong?
I, I think we're remembering it right. I have the 60% set in front of me, and it's not on that set, so.
Okay, but I know we went back and forth, so I'm sure, but I, I think we did end on that.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we can absolutely follow us too, that's, that's no issue there.
Do you know what the cost of that was, Chris, from Sourcewell? Was that the package, one of the packages?
Um, I would have to look that up again, I don't remember. I don't have that written in front of me either.
Okay, it's something we can follow up on.
Yeah. I will, I will, I'll look that up, and I will get that over to Paul.
Thank you. Yeah, Troy.
So, it's what we're, we're looking at, is we're looking at to accept the bid from Anderson Brothers and to vote on completing as much as, as our allotted money will allow us this year?
Yeah, I think staff's recommendation was, is to award at a minimum the base bid and the Sourcewell items that go with that, and then just looking for some direction from the board on alternate one, if you want to construct that, and then leave it for the time being, or not construct it at all. Those are kind of the two, the two options.
I guess the one thing I would say is, is that regarding the alternate is, if you, if we can get all of our groundwork and underground work and land disruption done, you know, that would be, that will pay dividends down the road as far as, you know, as a cutoff Ms. Sandy, could you speak just a little bit about the bids we received and a little bit about the timing and, you know, lifespan of this bid and, and what that, what our timing sequence looks like, assuming that approval happens? And then I can kind of cycle us back to just the, the key points that we want to hit here, but unless anybody else has anything else that they're looking for, for info, that's, that's one thing I'm looking for. Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, I think Chris and I can tag-team this one. If we were to award the bid tonight, we would go and get signatures on our contracts, which usually is a two-to-three-week type thing. Anderson Brothers would then be directed to proceed basically with procuring materials. There may be some things that are hard to get right now, the biggest items that Darryl brought up were possibly rebar, steel is at a premium right now, maybe some of the building materials, but the sooner we can get Anderson Brothers a notice to proceed, the better off we're gonna be, because as soon as the frost breaks, they'd be able to start construction, which could be within the next couple of weeks. So, they have other work for the city this year, so they're gonna be around. I anticipate that they'll be starting other construction projects for, on behalf of the city here, as soon as frost breaks, so they're gonna be around town. But the sooner we can give them the, at least the go-ahead on the base bid, and we can talk about alternate one again at a future date, we can always change order that in. They were agreeable to, you know, if, basically, they said if we get the base bid and get that out of the way, we can talk about alternate one a little more as, even as the summer goes on. If we have a big, you know, change in contract midway through the summer that maybe deletes something, or there's a big add-on, then that might actually, you know, decide whether we do alternate one too. And so it's good to have that flexibility right now, I think, and not mess with alternate one at all, and maybe we look at it in a month or a month and a half again as we get into this thing and make sure that we're, we're, we have enough money in the bank to cover any type of change orders, or maybe even a deletion change order that we decide that we may not want, or something to change site conditions or something where we could actually save some money. So, that would be my recommendation, Chris. I think that's kind of what we discussed a little bit, was let's, you know, let's get Anderson Brothers on board, but let's also take a step back and wait on alternate one until we really know how construction is kind of progressing, so we don't overextend ourselves in case we run into a change order that could be larger than what we want, so.
Understood. Mr. Rushmeyer?
Yep, that's, my biggest concern right now is like Paul says with materials, it's, it's with a lot of things right now, there's a lot of lead time, and those Sourcewell packages too, the sooner, the better we can get those ordered and get those things coming, so we don't have delays later on, because there's a lot of things right now that are, there's very serious lead time on.
Understood, thank you, Chris. Did you have something, Troy?
Yeah, so does alternate one fit within the, the money allotted, that we have allotted for the project for this year, along with, along with Anderson Brothers' bid?
Yeah, Anderson Brothers' bid on the base and alternate one, so they were the low together, combined, for both the base and alternate, but it does fit right now, but it doesn't leave us much for wiggle room contingency. It's like 20 grand at the end of the day, I think, or something like that, so it's not, not a lot of, of room. You know, we usually try to save some contingency on the top end of a project in case change orders, you're always gonna have changes in the contract, construction-wise, that are gonna pop up through a construction job.
Sure, but as far as, I mean, once they start work, would it not be beneficial for them to work on both rinks and, and at the same, you know what I mean, if they're pouring concrete and they're, I mean, versus holding off on one, is that gonna cost us more doing it that way? I mean, because we have, once they sign that contract, they're, they're held to that contract as well, correct? And I understand how change orders work and stuff, but, I mean, if we, if we move forward with this, I personally, and I'm only asking this because I would, I would like to see as much of that second rink done this year as possible, and, and the basketball hoops and, and whatnot, just to alleviate some costs for the following year, but, so I, I hear you say, you know, they could hold off on, on the alternate and see how things are going, but, I mean, once we cut loose, it seems like that would be more economical to work on both of those areas at the same time, but.
There's, there's definitely some risk both ways, you know, I think we would have to make a decision by the next park board meeting, for sure.
Okay.
On the alternate, I think they could get started, and I think with, probably the May park board meeting, we would want to have a decision on alternate one. But, you know, we, we could always award both the base bid and the alternate and not purchase the Sourcewell items. It's a risk, there's not much contingency left to play with, but that's always an option too. I don't know what your thoughts are on that, Chris?
Yeah, I, I agree with that, you know, you, Paul, you and I talked about that, you know, there's, there's not a lot left to conti- contingency, but, you know, if we can, if we can get at least the infrastructure into that small rink now, it's gonna save you some money a year or two years from now. You know, I think Anderson Brothers will, you know, work with us on this alternate, you know, as long as we don't take too long to make a decision. So we do have a little bit of time there, but we can, again, we can keep looking at things, and see if there's things we can reduce some costs on, get a little more cushion there if possible.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Say, can I back up to that player's bench question here? So were, were you looking at removing all the concrete and the benches as well, or was it just the benches itself?
I believe it was the benches itself. The, the concrete is showing up on all of my drawings, all versions of my drawings, so I think we were gonna have the, the platform out there for, for people to stand on, so they're not in mud, you know, we're not doing that, and you put rubber mats on them through the, is my recollection here, but, but no, no boards for those.
Okay, because I was looking through, and I don't see any benches in, in anything here, so those were, I don't believe were included.
Okay, so that makes sense, yeah. Okay.
That makes more sense.
And I must, would it be fair to assume that between Mr. Sandy and, and you, Chris, you guys can, can help put together timelines so that, that us on the board are making sure that we're getting our decisions done in a timely, in a timely manner, that's not gonna affect the project money-wise or timing-wise, for not just our initial phases, but for also decision-makings on, or decision-making regarding finishes or any, any decisions that come along the way? Can, can you guys create a deadline schedule for us, of which we'll be expected to perform on?
Yeah, we can do that, and that's, it's something that we can talk about, you know, we'll, we'll probably be setting up a pre-con for this, so that's something we can discuss with a contractor or two.
Perfect.
They may have some of those things, you know, ready to present to you guys at that time, but we can certainly get out ahead of those things as much as possible and get those to you, since you can only meet typically once a month.
Fantastic.
Can we also get a photo? I know, just so we're all on the same page again. It doesn't have to be the, you know, 20-page packet, but just like another photo, so we're all understanding exactly. I don't know, it might, just kind of like the one you, I knew you answered.
The 3D rendering, or the rendering of the project?
Just something, even if it's like that piece of paper you have there. I mean, I have that, but I have like five of them, so I was wanting to make sure I have the most recent, and I know we're talking about it, but it's also nice, I'm a visual person, I like to see it too, just to be like, yep, this is what we want for sure.
Chris, that's.
Yeah, are you, the plan view?
I think plan view, I remember, we did have a 3D rendering that was maybe not 100% plan, but it was close, or, or close to it. Of especially the, I think it was right around the core of the project, I think we, we had one, I don't remember where that came in, Chris, but it may have been earlier on than the 60%, but.
Okay.
All right, we good? Okay, you're looking for a motion? Sorry, Mr., Mr. Bedell, please.
I just wanted to make sure that we're clear on this, and whether or not my math is correct. You're short about 78,500.
Okay. Yep, thank you. All right, Mr. Sandy, in summary, you're looking for a motion for sure on the initial bid, base bid, with potentially a secondary motion on the alternate one, is that correct?
Yep.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Can we just clarify the motion?
I can just, I can read it off.
Okay, perfect.
So the motion would be to award the base bid for Memorial Park redevelopment project in the total amount of $918,329 to Anderson Brothers Construction of Brainerd. We also recommend approval to purchase the Sourcewell items for the base bid, including dasherboard systems, lighting, and the rubber tiles in the total amount of $154,319.
Good with that, Troy? Yep. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Rushmeyer, a second by Ms. Schaefer. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Tim Boder?
Dale Parks?
Yes.
Troy Rushmeyer?
Yes.
Kara Schaefer?
Yes.
Kevin Jaeger?
Yes, motion carries. All right, exciting. We'll move on to 7B, this is a request to set the design standard meeting, number one, with Woodseth and the park board. Mr. Sandy, I'm thinking, yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so this was just a quick item to set up a meeting with Woodseth. As you can see, Lindsay and Mike are here to talk to us briefly about this design standard creation that we've talked about a few times at this board, and so with that, you know, I think Mike and Lindsay can talk to their proposal and kind of what their vision is with a kickoff meeting, and then let them go to work and do their work, and then come back with a draft, and from there, get to a final deliverable. So, Mike and Lindsay, if you guys want to speak to that, I, I'll open it up.
Sure, thank you, Paul. Thank you, everybody, I'm Mike Anglin with Woodseth, and Lindsay Prinz with Woodseth as well, so, yeah, thanks, Paul, that was a great description of essentially what our proposal was. So in our proposal that we submitted, we do identify specific items that we would be discussing, what, the way that we felt it would be, the best way to go about doing this is just have a kickoff meeting with you all and just discuss all of these items. One of the items here that we have highlighted is maybe discussing expectations and the opportunities for branding and, and just moving forward what you would like to see. So, it's really great, you know, especially with what you are doing, what you just discussed, it seems like it's just a great time to revitalize things here, and so, we're very excited to be here, so we're ready and, and willing to meet, and if that's with all of you, maybe at your next park board meeting or whatever, is. or whatever is most convenient, we're, we're open to what you, uh, may think. And then Lindsey has, uh, I think the most applicable and, and best experience with establishing these standards and so she was a big part of this and she will be a big part of this as well.
Great.
Anything else, Lindsey, you'd like to add?
Fantastic. Lindsey, please.
Mike, I think that was very well said. Good, good afternoon, everyone. Um, I think design standards is a really great opportunity. It's a ever-changing target document that you can have to your disposal. Um, it just creates a really unified approach to building projects. It doesn't necessarily have to be a brand new building like you're discussing today, but even the minor improvements that you encounter year to year, um, it's just a helpful tool to go back and reference, you know? We just need to paint one wall. Well, what color is that? Well, here it is, you know, it's just very simple. Um, and it can get very complex like a, a new facility as well. So, hopefully, uh, through this process, we can create a document that's helpful for everyone and well into the future.
Great, fantastic. Mr. Sandy, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I foresee this kickoff meeting that we're talking about being more of like a workshop type where we say it, let it set aside two hours or something, uh, we take good notes, uh, let Woodseth kind of run the meeting and, uh, figure out what they, um, need from us. And then, um, from there, we would kind of set them loose to do their work based on our direction. Um, so, I mean, looking at just the calendar, the next park board meeting is on next week. Um, a workshop, you know, we could just say the sixth or something like that a couple of weeks from now to give you guys a break from meeting, cause I know you guys have meant a lot. Um, so, um, you know, we have a park board meeting on the twenty-third of this month and the twentieth of next month and the sixth splits that in half and that gives us, it's a quick, go ahead, Dale.
I was just gonna say, I thought the meeting next month was the twenty-seventh. That, that's where I have it in my calendar anyway.
Is it? Is it the third Tuesday?
Fourth.
Fourth, fourth Tuesday. Yeah, so you're right, the twenty-seventh. So, yeah, so we could either do the sixth or the thirteenth. That would give us some break time in between meetings, a couple of weeks, so. Uh, that's my recommendation. We kind of set aside two hours and more of a workshop, no formal actions. We don't have to have a, you know, it's more of just a workshop setting where we don't have any formal motions, so.
Yeah, understood. And sep- sep- special meeting, correct? Right, it's kind of what we're thinking, not putting it in with one of our, uh, yep, which I a hundred percent agree, right? Do you wanna set this date today or do we wanna send out a poll for all the participants and s- see if that works or do?
Depends on what you guys are comfortable with. If you guys know your schedules, your calendars, then we can set it today. But if you guys are uncomfortable with that, I can send out a doodle poll here tomorrow and just get that rolling, um, and put multiple dates down at four o'clock, assuming that it works, kind of works for everyone, but.
Perfect.
I'll wait for Tim.
I like the doodle poll because then we can get Tim in as well and, uh, and that, so if, if we could do that, that'd be great. And, uh, yeah, are we thinking kind of s- first or second week in April is kind of what we're leaning towards or?
I would say that's a good timeframe. That gets us moving in the right direction.
Feel like that'll give us enough time to kind of get through some of this, to be able to be ahead of the curve with our memorial project?
I think so.
All right, I'm seeing some nodding heads, so that's great, that's exciting. Yeah, Mr. Rushmeyer.
Where are we thinking about meeting? Would it be here or?
I would say here, we could probably meet in this room to keep spread out and we don't need to have like an actual, anyone at the dais. We can make it more of a workshop in the middle here, put some tables up and just have a conversation instead of having it so formalized, so.
Can we have images? I'm gonna be like, can you, at, at the other meeting we had, um, when we were planning the park, we were able to like bring up stuff on the computer and say like this building, this building. I don't know if you guys have access? Or I guess someone probably has pictures of all the buildings in town.
We do, yeah, we have quite a few pictures and, uh, taken some recently as well as preparing for this.
Okay.
And we could have GIS and Google Earth up too, to the best of our ability to be able to zoom in and look at things and, and do it that way too, so.
The facility study is a valuable document.
Facility study is a very valuable document.
Yep. Yeah, please, Mr. Rushmeyer.
With, with that, uh, I believe we, you know, we did all those park evaluations last summer. Um, and I believe we came up with a list of some common issues and, um, I don't know where that is. If we have that, it would be very helpful to have that at the meeting as well to just speed things along and, and make it more productive.
I can certainly provide that.
Okay.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I would say in preface to that meeting, anything that this board can do to visit other parks or to just get examples of, of something that kind of rings the way that we think we might wanna go just, uh, from a visual standard would be helpful for us to prepare. Is there anything else, uh, uh, Mike and Lindsey that you'd like for us to do leading up to this meeting to, to make it as productive as possible?
Um, I would say just in some recent projects we've worked on is the, uh, maybe some of the amenities that you would like incorporated. Uh, we've, we've encountered some pretty exciting things with, with other communities and then also, uh, signage that's maybe a little bit more interactive. I think maybe we had talked about that last time that we had a chance to talk and, uh, we're seeing quite a bit with QR codes that allow you to provide input on the parks and just maybe think about those kinds of things and we'll certainly come with some ideas as well, so. Um, we're, we're thinking we'll just come with, uh, throwing everything out there and, and just really having a great brainstorming session with all of you. So, I, I think that'd be the only thing I would say. Lindsey, anything else?
Mike, I think that's great.
All right.
Yeah, really, really tune into the most recent work we've done and, and pick out items you like or maybe don't like so that we can hone in on something that, uh, we can all agree on, so.
Oh, great, that's exciting. Looking forward to it. Anything else? No motion needed here, correct? All right, very good. Uh, we'll continue on. We have, uh, no new business on, uh, number eight. Uh, I think this might be the first time, maybe ever that I can remember in a, in a park board meeting where we should have new business. Uh, so at this time, uh, what is it, uh, four thirty-eight, I will open, uh, the public forum. Anybody that would like to speak, do we have anyone online?
Does it look like?
Call in? So, I will close the public forum at four thirty-eight. All right, and with that, uh, we are at number ten, which is an adjournment. Does we have anything else?
Uh, move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Mr. Parks and a second by?
Second.
And Ms. Schaefer. Uh, fantastic. Uh, any discussion, uh, hearing none, we'll vote by roll call. Oops, sorry.
There's. We're, we're done in forty minutes.
I know, I know. We, we clearly missed them.
Just kidding.
But in keeping with typical park board fashion, we did schedule a special meeting at this meeting.
Right.
That's just what we do. We, we do the special meeting, so. Very good.
Uh, did we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Oh, we did, in a second. All right, continuing on with our roll of call.
Tim Bauder? Dale Parks?
Yes.
Troy Rushmeyer?
Yes.
Kara Schaefer?
Yes.
Kevin Jaeger?
Yeah.